Let's go ahead and call to order. The work session, second work session on the proposed budget. I think the subject is our specialty millages. So I'll turn it over to you, Al, and go from there.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We are ready to start the second work session on the 2025 budget. We covered the general fund at the last work session, so we'll be focusing on the non-general fund portion of the budget today. This is a, I'm sure, a chart that violates all rules of PowerPoint, but it shows basically the sources in use of our special revenue funds. So basically, this shows what percent of our total revenue budget of our non-general funds is made up, where that distribution is. I'm sure you, at this point of today, don't want to take the time to really study that one, but you'll have it. I think we did send it to you, so you do have it along with the agenda. So today, we're going to cover the senior millage fund, the veterans' millage fund, the Ready by Five Millage Fund, lodging excise tax fund, correction and detention millage fund, and the special project fund. And so Jeff is going to walk us through those funds.
So given the lateness of the day, our sheriff requested we start with one of the funds that she's responsible for, at least partially, so we're going to jump forward to that one, if you don't mind.
Seriously?
And go a little bit out of order. So one of them here is the correction and detention fund, so we'll start with that. And I'm going to jump ahead in my notes. You can see this accounts for the proceeds of the dedicated millage levied to pay for operations and debt service related to the correction detention facilities. Revenue sources, twenty-five point, just over $25 million, up eight, or 6.3% from last year. You can see the expenses there. The owner of a home on this millage pays about $74, $87 a year on $100,000 value house on this millage. Looking at the next page of it, you can see primarily we transferred $21.5 million to the general fund, 84% of this fund, and then $3.8 million to debt service. So that's the breakout of the correction detention. Special project fund, you can see it accounts for expenditures and revenues of activities financed primarily by restricted grants or special revenue sources. You can see the different revenue there. 89.9% charges for services. Sixteen, I'm sorry. It's up 15.4% in total from last year to 15.25 million. The next slide will show the breakout of this. You can see the sheriff department security, $3.2 million, 18.9% of the, just about $17 million total. SRO program, $2.9 million. SD COP is .9 million. Township law, $8.5 million. And then small other, and then the guardianship program is also recorded in here. So I'm going to pause there briefly because the sheriff is still here and see if we have any questions on those two funds.
All right, Commissioner DeBoer.
What are our debt that we have for the sheriff's department?
I'm sorry, though.
What's the debt that we have for the sheriff's department?
The actual payment, annual payment, or the total outstanding?
What is it going towards?
Oh, it goes towards when they built the original detention center. It was, we funded that with bond from CISA.
And that's all in detention?
Yes.
Juvenile detention?
Juvenile.
Other questions?
Hennessy here.
Yes, Commissioner Hennessy.
I'm curious as to why we always have a fund balance at the end of the year.
So we manage, we typically try to keep a minimum of at least one year's debt service, and we have a plan to spend this down incrementally through the end of the millage period, which I believe expires in 2029. Marvin, does that sound right? So we're managing this fund to spend it down as the millage is expiring, so.
Okay, but you have, you do keep enough money in there for one, for a year of debt?
A year of debt, plus, yeah, we have a full plan to spend this down as the millage expires, so. We don't want to be sitting on a huge fund balance as the millage expires, so that's, this fund is meant to be spent to support the general fund operations.
Okay.
All right, other questions? Okay, I think we've covered those.
All right, I'm going to jump back then. So senior millage, we'll go back to that. Of course, this is used to account for the proceeds of the millage to plan, coordinate, evaluate, provide services to persons 60 years of older in Kent County. You can see $16.8 million budget, which is up 12.3% from last year. The owner of a home with a taxable value of $100,000 pays $49.61 per year for this millage. And then these are all the programs that the senior millage provides support for. See a large of it as wellness at $5.1 million. The green bar here is meals, food service, $3.3 million. And you can see the other breakdown there. And I'll pause real quick to see if there's any questions.
So Jeff, having sat on that committee, I recall that most of the programs are asked to do some kind of fund matching, or then, and it's not much, but is that calculated in the revenue side of this, or is that outside of that?
This is just the county's share of those expenses?
This represents the county's senior millage plan of those expenses.
So if the program for transportation, for example, asks recipients of the service to make a contribution for the ride, and that adds up to $5,000, I think that that goes back into the service, doesn't it?
Yeah, I don't think, this is only, I think this only accounts to what is taken in on senior millage. It doesn't account for the full budget of any depart, of any service we fund, because we tell every service we are not going to be your 100% source of funding.
Right, but to the extent that we raise money out of that by co-pays or contributions, we don't account for that. We don't know how much that is in this.
No, that would more than likely be accounted for on the entity's books that are providing the service. And then this is a contractual payment to them to provide that service.
Well, I think they have to pay it back to us. To us.
Put it back into the.
They have to put it back into the system somewhere.
Put it back into the service before they draw from our money.
Okay.
So the agencies are actually required to put the money, you know, if you collect $5, you put that money, $5 in before you start accounting for what you're going to take out of the senior millage money.
Okay.
Anyway, you said for certain this is the senior millage fund's share of those activities.
Yes, Commissioner DeBoer, Jack.
Thanks, Marvin.
Thank you, Chair. Is Meals on Wheels part of this meal, food services?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, with the proposed federal budget cuts, how will that impact the county? Will we be looked at to fund the shortfalls and what's anticipated? Thank you.
I'm not sure I can answer that question yet at this point.
So those that sit on that, you and I, anyone else?
Yeah, I would answer that, that this is what, what you're seeing here is, you know, meals are a priority service, so, you know, it does receive $3.3 million, according to this chart. That is not including any federal money or any other state money or any other sources of money that would come in. This is just strictly the money that's raised through our millage services and is put directly back into this. So it would not be dependent. Any cuts that they would have would be separate from what we're funding. And, you know, and it may mean, if there are cuts from the federal government, that they come and ask for more of, more senior millage during the next application period. That's not to say that won't happen.
And that'll be decided by the allocation committee. My guess is that it's highly likely, if there was a significant cut of federal funds, that the senior millage would increase its contribution because it is a priority service.
So you have futures, this pie may look a little different then. Obviously, it's shifting the expenses, so, sorry.
So most of these funds, they've got other sources of funding, or this is like, the senior millage is like, in cash?
They must, in fact, I think we require them to have some others.
We're good with that?
Any other questions? Mr. Antor, did you have your?
Nope.
Okay, all good.
Okay, moving on to veterans' millage funds. On page 50 of your budget document, I've been forgetting to say that, but this accounts for the millage to provide assistance, burial assistance, non-recurring emergency financial assistance, and contact information about available veteran services and programs. You can see it's $1,006 in revenues, which is up 5.7% from last year. The owner of a home with $100,000 taxable value pays about $5 a year for this service. You can see all the various, again, on this slide, the various programs that it supports. 23% is the largest one. And we have 25.9% is for dental, 6.1% for substance abuse, and 11.6%, I believe, is for outreach. So, and some of the other smaller programs within veterans' millage. Any questions on veterans?
Mr. Antor.
Sure, does this include any Cold War veterans? Are they eligible for this now, these types of benefits? Or is it just strictly other?
Aren't these allocations subject to the Veteran Service Committee's recommendation?
Yes, all our veterans are eligible unless they left service for a not acceptable reason.
Okay, there was a point, I don't know, maybe through the VA or whatever, different benefit programs didn't apply to Cold War veterans, only people that served in combat. And I didn't know if that ever was connected to this.
For the millage, no.
Okay, and then the other question I had at one point after this millage, which I support, obviously, but we were having a little bit of trouble. Part of the money was supposed to be, a lot of it was supposed to be on educating veterans, to let them know that they have these benefits. And I was wondering if we had any type of conclusions based on, there was quite an effort. Did it, did it help ramp up the applicants coming in? Do we know that yet? And are we able to spend this money? Because we had some cash reserves at one point, and I just wonder where we're at compared to like, two years ago.
Yeah, that's correct, that the spending didn't happen very quickly in the beginning and has much improved. Particularly, Commissioner DeBoer is on the Veteran Services Advisory Committee. That group is really doing a wonderful job of identifying priorities and needs in the community and providing advice and recommendations to staff on, on areas for spending, so that has helped a lot, and we're doing much better now.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
They also have a really good outreach coordinator.
Can you turn your mic on, maybe?
They have a great outreach coordinator as well, and she's actively trying to find engagements in various ways that we can get more veterans aware and involved in some of the services that they have.
Yeah, in addition, we did spend $1.2 million last year on a nine-month budget, so we did have a significant spend there. We're projecting to spend $1,008.43 this year, so they are doing a good job spending down those balances.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right, anything else on veterans?
Okay, moving on, Ready by Five Millage Fund. As you know, this accounts for programs to improve the health, school readiness, and well-being of children under the age of five. Total revenue is $8.2 million, up 5.3% from last year. The owner of a home with a taxable value of $100,000 pays $23.90 per year for this service. And this is the breakdown of the programs within that millage. Health and development is one of the largest portions, at $3.7 million, 2.8 million at outreach. And then blue is parenting and education, supports the next largest service in this category.
We're still spending accumulated dollars during the pandemic, right?
Correct.
That's why the expenditures are greater than the revenues?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Antor.
I brought this up at one of the previous meetings, and I wasn't 100% sure, but does this five and under include prenatal? Do you know, there is some prenatal work in there. Okay. Okay, good enough, thank you.
And again, this allocation is based upon the allocation committee's recommendation to us.
Correct.
Anything else on this one? All right, to the next one.
All right, moving on to our favorite topic, lodging excise tax fund, of late, anyway. You can see we plan on getting, having revenues of $13.3 million this year, down slightly from $14.4 or $1.5 adopted last year. We have expenses of $16.8 million. This is used to, of course, acquire the tax. Primary use is to pay our bonds first, and then we have our breakout to Experience Grand Rapids. This graph shows that, so you can see administration, 8.58, which includes the bond payment, 2.75 to general fund. Sorry, the blue one is debt service, I'm in the wrong area. To general fund, 2.75 million, we're planning and paying ourselves back, whoops. The $10 million, that was advanced, or $11 million, we've paid back one. This year, we're anticipating taking back about 2.3, and then next year, we're budgeting to take back 2.75 of that advance. And then you can see the amphitheater, $5 million contribution, which was approved previously, and that will continue for two more years. And then Experience Grand Rapids, 2.74 million this year.
Can you go back one slide with the fund balance?
Yep.
6.6 million?
6.6.
Commissioner?
Commissioner Antor.
Excise tax has kind of become a golden goose. We keep kind of tapping into it, and we say, well, there's people coming into the town that will be paying it. And this will be a millage request, so it will be up to the voters, but I think we do get to a point where we might rely on that too much and make the cost of coming into Grand Rapids too high for people, because that is a huge consideration when you go in places. How much is it going to cost me to stay overnight? So I hope we don't become too dependent on this tax, maybe look for other ways. I understand it's a user tax, and, but it's almost like penalizing people to come here by saying, by the way, you're going to help pay this. I just think we need to be cognizant of that. I don't want to be like other cities where you pay 200 or 300 bucks a night to stay at a hotel, and they're out there.
You can pay 300 bucks a night here if you want.
I could, but I couldn't do anything else the rest of the week.
I think the question may be going to, are we remaining competitive? Are we an outlier at this point if, if we do that? And I don't know, Jeffrey, you want to respond to that, but I know that in the current proposal, that's been carefully scrutinized as to where all the comparable communities are with respect to that.
And I would just say consumer trade shows, for instance, they look at, because these are just regular people traveling around the country going to shows, and they look at hotels. Sometimes they're, end up staying out in tents and stuff because it's just, they can't afford it. So there's, you know, different types of shows, different type of people coming here. I just don't want to get too crazy on this excise tax.
And I'll just add, too. I was talking to the guy from Visit Tampa, and I brought up the thing of the taxes, and the taxes I pay on my hotel bill. And a lot of times, these conventions that come in, depending on your staff, like they had, and I'm sure ours is the same way. When we're attracting conferences, don't we approach the hotels to discount those rates to get that thing in?
It's a negotiation between the convention arena authority, Experience Grand Rapids, and then who they're, who they're negotiating to bring in. So, yeah, we don't, we don't do that, but that, that is a discussion that happens.
But it does happen.
Yeah.
Well, and if the, if the supply's dried up, there's not much negotiating. So right now, we're pretty tight, so there probably won't be a lot of discounts. So it's just something to be aware of. I mean, right now, we, everybody seems to have some money, but as things get tighter, they're going to start looking at how much it's a cost to spend the night, so.
Couple of things I just wanted to bring up. We've had two requests that are in the budget thus far. One is.
For this money.
For this money. Festival of the Arts is something we've historically funded for many, many years. It's like $13,000. They have requested an additional five. And Art Prize has requested an additional 125 over the 75 that you approved last year. And that would put the county at the same level as the city Experience Grand Rapids and other major public contributors. And then the only other comment that's interesting is we're kind of looking into the comparability. I saw that some of our comparable communities around the nation are in states that allow cities or counties or both to have a local option sales tax. So when you see the amount of convention tax of, of this excise tax, they might have both, a sales tax and this, where of course, in Michigan, cities and counties can't do a local option sales tax. So it was kind of an interesting find, too, is that we're typically in the middle, maybe just above the middle of the pack if this 3% goes through. But then when you parse out the communities that also have a sales tax, it makes us look even better, I think.
Commissioner DeBoer.
Thank you, Chair. I'm wondering, the 44% of debt services, is that common? I mean, it seems high, but it's for excise, so it makes sense that it would be a lot higher. But is that comparative with other communities of, do they allocate about half of their excise tax towards debt services?
So I don't know about other communities, I, I can't answer that. This debt was the one that was issued in 2021 to build DeVos Place. I think it was around 92, 2001, right? So it's a 30-year debt, expires December 31, or December 1 of 2031. And it was a capital appreciation bond, so in the beginning years, when the tax was low, the payments were low. So as time has gone on on this debt, as taxes have gone up, it's kind of matched itself over time. So that's why you see this very large payment at the end of this particular bond.
I would just say, too, that as we've looked around the country, there seems to be as many ways to finance a new facility as there are places. So when we looked at the soccer stadium in Columbus, that one was a $400 million project, and the city and county and their convention arena authority covered 100 of it, and the private sector covered 300 million of it. So there's certainly different stacks, different ways to do the stack. Some are totally private, some are totally public, and some are a mix. So I don't know there's a standard percentage. It's just kind of how each community figures out how to get it done.
And that, that does increase about $300,000 per year until it's paid off in 2031, so.
The existing arena, is it? It's for the arena?
It's for DeVos Place.
For DeVos Place.
Yep.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Al, you mentioned, you know, Art Prize wants an increase in festival as well. Is that in here, or is that something to be decided separately by us?
That's in here, and we have talked to Art Prize about coming in and making a proposal directly to the board.
Okay, it's in here as, sort of as a contingency, then?
Well, kind of like what we did with the West Michigan Planning Commission. The dues for that are $9,000, but we programmed them in the budget already, so you didn't have to decide to spend $9,000 this morning. So it's the same here, since we had the request and we agreed with the request, we put it in here subject to board, to board approval.
Okay.
So if we didn't approve it, it comes back out?
Exactly.
Okay, so this is sort of a sideways question to it in that we have those two as, you know, individual-type projects. Are other projects like this festivals or what have you eligible to apply?
Well, I think part of that will be determined when the board can, if the 3% is successful, then I think, you know, the next step will be the board to take a look at how to spend the money. And you could, I think, you could take that approach. I think festivals historic, and the uniqueness of Art Prize was, I sit on the DGRI board, and we were kind of surprised late the year before last when the folks who were doing Art Prize pulled out rather quickly. And so the city and DGRI kind of led the way to kind of save that festival. And so it just kind of created a more of an urgent need situation to, to keep that going.
The expenditures still have to comply with the state statute and what we can use it for.
Correct.
And that changed when they approved the ability to go to?
Yeah, I think most notably, they added aquariums, which is our request, and then they also added sports commission stadium kind of, yeah. But kind of like what our sports commission is doing became eligible.
Okay. Yes.
Thank you, Joe. Al, you probably would know more about this maybe than anybody else in this room, but at one point, it seems to me nationally, they did a study on publicly-owned arenas and conference centers. And they traditionally were hemorrhaging money. They, they were always running in the black. They had a shelf life of like 10 to 15 years, in spite of all the money pumped in. And that was nationally. It seems like we've been the exception, maybe, over here a little bit with, with our, the way we've done things. But we're still paying for these buildings, and I'm wondering, my fear is we're going to finally get maybe out of debt, or paid off, and we're going to need new ones, you know? And I'm wondering if there's been any thought, how we, I know we talked about, you know, our buildings that state of repair they're in and so on and forth, or capital improvement projects. And I just, it's not registering right now how DeVos Place is looking.
Actually, the operating agreement does provide for funds to be kept to improve the place. So for example, this year, a whole bunch of carpeting was replaced, and they've done roofs, and so they do a really good job, the CAA, which we're part of, so I could say we do a good job of maintaining those facilities, which is extremely important, as you've noted.
I'd like to be able to use them, get out debt, and actually have them with no debt on them anymore, and still be able to use them.
Well, you know, in 2031, the debt goes off the convention center, so that'll be nice.
Then the arena and.
But as to your other comment, there are spectacular failures around the nation when it comes to the public funding stadiums. I mean, what I've noticed as one difference that could apply to your question as far as why is it different here? In many, many cases, the public footed 100% of the bill of those stadiums and didn't share the risk with the private or nonprofit sectors. And here, I think we've had an unofficial formula, it's not the same percentage, but we're, we do get that, public and private, and we do have a lot of local business leaders involved. And so I think that has really helped us be able to stand up projects that have stood the test of time. And even during COVID, which, or in the Great Recession, we still managed to keep things afloat. And I, I mean, all the, we're, the facilities are setting records every single year now, and, and as our hotel room sales. So it's a, it's really a positive at this point in time.
But our CAA facilities also retain significant capital balances to cover those costs of improving, maintaining. They've not come back to us in all the years they've existed, asking us to fund improvements.
Right.
I know, when we burned our mortgage, man, that was the happiest day of my life. And it's like, we got a beautiful home, this is going to be a beautiful home and it's like, we had a beautiful home, it's going to be a beautiful home for the next 100 years, and we don't have a mortgage on it. And that would be so nice to get out from underneath that debt and still be able to use it for another 20, 25 years.
We'll hang around for five years, we'll be there.
I'm going fishing.
All right.
Yeah, this is a quick follow-up. I was in a meeting with Rich this week, and don't quote me on the number, but I believe he said, we've, they've pumped about 46 million in capital expenditures over the, since, since this was built, out of their own funds. And I think he said this is the only facilities in the country that isn't subsidized by the local governments, it stands on its own, so it's, it is pretty unique.
It is unique.
Yeah, very. And Commissioner Hennessy, so you can see the small amount to Art Prize and the festival in this graph here, they're tiny little, tiny little pieces, but they are in there, so. I think that was the last of our funds. We covered those other ones earlier. So key budget dates coming up, August 6. Finance will act on the annual budgets, those will all the ones we typically pass by 9:30 with our different fiscal years. And then August 6 will actually take action on the proposed budget finance, too, and then the public hearing is scheduled for the 8th, which was noticed in the meeting today. And then the board is scheduled to take action on August 22.
Is there another work session after this?
We have none scheduled right now.
Okay. Yes.
I'm not sure where this question, I, I know, and I don't know where to find it right now, I'm not finding it immediately, but there was an increase projected also for the, our payment to the right place? That there was going to be a big increase for next year?
Right, and that wouldn't come out of this.
Where does that, what, what part of our budget, budget discussion does that come out of?
General fund.
That would be general fund, yeah.
Okay, I backtrack then and ask you about that, because I didn't see it then.
What's the increase, is what you're asking?
It was 125,000, but I'm working from memory right now.
Marvin's looking it up here.
So if you have your book, can you turn to page C-Lo? If you look at page 27, anyway, you'll see the Community and Economic Development section grew from 1.34 million to 1.58 million. That increase in that Community and Economic Development category reflects that increase that you brought up.
So what's the specific increase? Was it 250, it has been, and it's going up to?
Look to see if I can find it in the Schedule of Uses, it's in there, I'm just looking to see what page it's on. It's probably on page 24, but Economic Development, so went from 250 to 300, and on page 24, you see it two rows up from the other subtotal.
Go ahead.
Quick then, so you had mentioned the reinvestment into the facilities, which would be considered, profits are being put away somewhere to do the improvements at a later date?
Yes, their operating profits have been set aside over time to pay those capital expenditures, yes.
Okay, so, but it's profits from a facility that taxpayers are paying for, for them to operate in? That's correct, right? There's.
Well, I mean, they're primarily funded by user fees and charges. Yes, I think it's, I don't understand your question.
But there's still.
It's the operations that generate the money that they put into the capital account.
The surplus to be able to afford the capital expenditures, yes.
Okay, so is that broke down ahead of time in our agreements of what is acceptable expenses, and that then the, because if a facility isn't making money, wouldn't, wouldn't make sense? I mean, how do we, how does the CAA decide where, I mean, where did that big pocket of money that they're sitting on come from?
So surplus is over time, definitely. Like I said, they, they're one of the few, I think the only facility that ASM manages anyway, that has made money over time. It's typically subsidized annually by contributions from the supporting entities like Kent County or City of Grand Rapids. So they save that money. Their current agreement has a fund balance policy for both operational expenses plus capital expenses. So their board, which we have two or three members on the board, the CAA board, I forget how many, sets their annual budgets and includes all the annual operating targets, plus the capital set aside, and they also approve their capital project list, it's quite substantially changed every year, so.
But maybe the question is, does our agreement with the CAA require that they do that as a normal course?
The agreement doesn't require, it, it does require a capital reserve.
Yes.
Fund, yes.
Okay, so then a, a bigger question then. So let's just take the veterans, the special revenue funds. When the auditors come in and audit our books, are these funds done separate, or would the Veterans Special Revenue Fund go into a larger pail, because they're getting other money besides our, our millage, federal funds and that? Do the auditors take it all as one, or will they separate these special funds out in the report?
So their testing includes limited testing by selection on all funds, yes. So I, I have to check to see if it's all rolled up together into one special revenue, similar to like it is in the budget, I have to look at the audit report specifically. But they do look at each fund independently, and then are also, our single audit every year looks at any sort of grant funding, and that's that separate audit they perform on all of our grants, so.
Okay, thanks.
All right, anything else?
I just wanted to add one thing. So when you do look at page 24, under Economic Development, and that number one from 250 to 300, I just wanted to clarify that 25,000 is for the right place. 25,000 would be an additional investment in the Slale Conservation District, and so that would get them to $75,000. The ultimate goal would be to get them to 100,000 a year. They bring in a 14 to 1 return on dollars invested.
It's not all going to the right place.
Right, 25,000, not 50,000.
All right, any other questions? Is there anything else, Jeff, for Al?
No, but thank for, Jenny for being here, Marvin for helping me out.
This conversation now moves to the Finance Committee.
Yep.
Stay tuned.
Thank you.
We are adjourned.